Members of council, we'll move on to delegations. We need two-thirds vote to hear. We have six delegations. We will do them all at once and vote collectively on the two-thirds. Christine Thornton, Marie Claire Bissonnet, Eric Alcock, Tamara Leclerc, Emma Leclerc, and Larry Lad. Members of council, I need to see all hands. I need a motion to hear.
Motion to hear, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Counselor Bates. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing no hands, we have our two-thirds. At this time, I would like to invite Christine Thornton forward, please. So, when you're ready, make sure the green button in the center is lit. Just press it.
All right. Oh, and we're live.
You're live and you have five minutes.
This is always very exciting.
Five minutes.
Okay, so, sorry, I have to adjust this here. Short people problems. Good evening, council, mayor, and friends and staff. I'm here today to talk to you in regards to a proposed ban on graphic anti-abortion imagery in around residentially-zoned neighborhoods. I'd like to start by reading you the letter that I got actually from your clerks, and it said, "Please be advised that while members of council will receive your letter and photographs intact, due to the potentially offensive nature of the images, the version that will be posted to the city's website will block out the posters being shown. Members of the public, et cetera, et cetera, they can go and access them themselves." This demonstrates to me that it's obvious that there are certain people who we want to protect from these images. So I'm asking the city to use the Canadian Code of Advertising Standards as a means to enforce a bylaw to restrict such graphic imagery. On the day that we encountered the anti-abortion protesters, it began as a very civil encounter, and it did end as a civil encounter, largely who I believe were the lead organizers. They were very polite people. There was one protester there who called me some very offensive names, which are generally reserved for women. I'm sure I don't need to state them. You can use your imaginations. And there was also one community member who was told that she should have been happy that she was raped, because that was something that apparently was seen to be appropriate despite the fact that there were children playing maybe 15 or 20 meters away. So as a mom myself, I'm concerned, and I'm sure that you guys can understand, and I'm just hoping that you act on this to keep our cohesive community safe. And that's really it. It's a simple matter. It's very straightforward.
Thank you. Members of council, questions to Ms. Thornton? Counselor McQuaid-England.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today you would like council to consider this and come back with a report with options on how to deal with the situation?
Yes, I would like that.
And for those that might be in the audience, is your request to limit their freedom of expression in terms of writing things like abortion kills, or any of those sort of signages that could be used?
Absolutely not. I believe that freedom of expression is fundamentally important to all Canadian citizens. I myself, I regularly engage in my right to dissent and to talk in my community. It's merely the images that I take issue with, largely because those are not actually really representative of what an aborted fetus would look like anyways. One of the images that I did speak to one of the lead organizers there, the baby, I call it a baby because it was in a hospital blanket, and I don't really think we would be putting aborted fetuses in hospital blankets. So that tells me that was likely a stillborn. So if you can imagine for a moment stepping into the shoes of a woman who's given birth to a stillborn, how triggering that must be. We're all adults here. We can imagine what would happen during a DNC, what that tissue would look like. It would have to be dismembered. So if the fetus that they're showing us is intact, that tells me it's likely really actually a miscarriage or a stillbirth. So that's just something I want to bring to your attention that is certainly worth considering.
And your request also is about sort of buffer zones in particular areas. You're not saying you can't do this anywhere. You said specifically you wanted it in residential areas because of children?
Yes. So I believe that we have, as parents, the right to talk to our children about things as we see fit as parents. And walking down a neighborhood street and coming across these images can be very distressing. I have a six-year-old daughter. She wasn't with me at the time, but I can imagine, she's very sensitive. She cries if she steps on a worm. That would be very traumatic for her. Well, we can have conversations about difficult things. This needs to be something that's rolled out gently with some children. And obviously, these images are intended to shock, and there's a time and a place for everything. And I just don't think outside of my home, where I'm coming to rest my head after an eight-hour workday, is really an appropriate place for me to be faced with images of deceased infants.
Thank you.
Any other member of council? Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Thank you very much.
Our next delegation is Marie Claire Bissonnet. Push the green button in the center, please, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, councillors, fellow staff. I have been asked to speak by the group Show the Truth to present to council our view on the issue before council, which is whether it should consider passing a bylaw to prohibit those who hold a view against abortion from sharing their views in residential areas of Oshawa. The issue today is not about abortion. It's not about whether we are for or against abortion. It's not about how we share the message for or against abortion. The issue today is about free speech. We won't at this time find agreement on the issue of abortion, as we all have our own perspectives. However, I do believe that we can agree on the issue of free speech. Firstly, and quite simply, municipal government does not have a freestanding right to legislate what its residents can or cannot say. In Canada, citizens have a right to share a message, even if some individuals don't like that message. The Supreme Court of Canada has held that the purpose of freedom of expression serves to protect minority beliefs, which the majority may regard as wrong or false. If freedom of speech protection existed only for the beliefs which were held by the majority, this protection would be superfluous. Secondly, the law recognizes city streets as protected areas for free speech. In a case called Commonwealth, the Supreme Court said that citizens have a right to share a message on public sidewalks, which the court said, quote, "by virtue of their very nature, are suitable locations for a person wishing to communicate an idea," end quote. The city can no more prohibit this expression from its streets than it can any other protest. Thirdly, a democratic society does not allow the muzzling of opinion. In fact, it encourages its citizens to share their opinion. Our Ontario Court of Appeal has said that, quote, "The very lifeblood of democracy is the free exchange of ideas and opinions. If these exchanges are stifled, democratic government itself is threatened," end quote. If we are truly to discover what is right or wrong, what is acceptable or unacceptable, or what is helpful or harmful for the betterment of our society, we must allow freedom of speech for the participants of this discussion, or else we run the risk of stifling the truth. Free speech allows us to challenge the status quo. If the status quo is worthy of being upheld, its defenders should not fear this challenge, but welcome it, as its validity will be made even more clear through the free exchange of ideas. With that same philosophy in mind, we must also respect the expression of the minority view for the sake of discovering its validity. Some citizens who hold certain views are prone to simply shutting down the free speech of those who disagree, rather than having a civil debate. Our law does not support this position. Finally, the group Show the Truth poses no fiscal risk to the community of Oshawa. We are not sure why the group DIR has categorized the Show the Truth group in this fashion. This categorization is incorrect. The group has never been found to breach any bylaws or found guilty of any inappropriate behavior. It is a strict code of conduct in order to ensure its members always conduct themselves properly. I have copies of this code of conduct, if you wish to see it. Indeed, on May 26, 2018, at least three Durham Regional Police Officers attended the display of Show the Truth. They did not communicate to the group any concerns about their behavior or display. However, the officers did caution two other individuals who seemed upset at the opinions of the group, one on the issue of assaulting a member of the group. In sum, we ask that the city continue to respect the free speech right of all its residents, no matter what the message, and decline from taking a position for or against any social issue. This view helps us all to respect each other's opinion and nurtures true democratic discourse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members of council, questions? Counselor Bates?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Thank you for your presentation. I want to ask, have you read, in its entirety, Charter of Rights and Freedoms?
I have not, in its entirety.
It does say in the Charter of Rights and Freedoms that although it's enshrined within our constitution, the law is not absolute, and it is subject to change should any other -- let me see, get this straight for a minute. As long as it can be limited, as long as those limits can be shown to be reasonable in a free and democratic society. Having said that, do you believe that graphic pictures are reasonable to be shown to small children?
I've witnessed graphic pictures being shown to small children. To be honest, a lot of them don't know what they are, and those who do recognize what is being shown, they react in a way that would be appropriate to the reality of abortion, which is, look, that's a dead baby. And I've not witnessed, in my experience with Show the Truth, that dates back to 2009, I've not witnessed a child getting upset. I've not witnessed a child throwing a tantrum or being very disturbed. They often, they recognize what it is, and then they continue with their own way.
You don't think that this image would cause any problem in their psyche?
There's, I've not seen any evidence of trauma.
We have laws in Ontario that prohibit children from watching movies if they are considered to be violent, and if they're considered to be bloodthirsty, or considered to be inappropriate for certain age groups. Do you agree with those laws?
I do.
Do you agree with child pornography?
I do not.
So it's okay to pick and choose what you may or may not show children or young adults?
I believe that the issue of child pornography and the issue of abortion are very different.
It still has got an effect. I'm not going to argue with you on that, because I have an argument as long as my arm, but it will still have an effect on any child.
Questions, please.
Yes, sorry. Do you agree that if a child falls out of a tree and breaks his arm, he may remember that when he's 20?
I do.
You don't think, though, that a child who views graphic images will not remember those images when they're 20?
Are we to outlaw climbing trees?
Are we to -- We are there to protect children, are we not?
We need to stay to questions, please.
No, are we not?
We are.
And showing graphic images, do you believe that showing graphic images of certain types are okay for children, but other types are not?
I do agree that we are there to protect children. We are showing these images because some children are not protected, and we believe that society at large needs, has a responsibility to witness this and see what's happening and react to that.
Do you firmly believe that the pictures on your posters are real?
I do.
I'm a registered nurse. I worked in an operating room. There were many occurrences of abortion, miscarriage, spontaneous or otherwise. I have never seen those types of things in the experience of my working life, which spanned 40 years. Can you believe that?
I guess it would depend on what involvement you have had.
I'm an operating room nurse. That's where these procedures take place, so that's the extent of my involvement. Thank you.
Counselor McQuaid-England.
Thank you. What do you say to the individuals that have come forward that have had miscarriages or have chosen for their own reasons to have an abortion, or have had stillbirths, who see those images when they're trying to go grocery shopping, and it triggers PTSD, it triggers a reaction from them? Are you considering that, and is that part of your code, to ensure that, because I know your code talks about physical violence, but violence and the repercussions of what you're doing are not just physical, they're also emotional and psychological? So how does your organization deal with those women who have been through those experiences and who are traumatized by those pictures that you show?
Thank you. Our code also speaks to treating people respectfully and such. I would reply by, I'm sorry for your loss. It's very unfortunate, the reality, whether it's a miscarriage or an abortion because a child has died. I think that PTSD, in this case, if it does arise, that there's a reason why it's arisen, and that's the death of the child. And if we're not allowed to show that in society, if we're not allowed to show the truth, or we can have a discussion of whether the photos are real or not, but I think that this is an issue that we should see as a society. And obviously, our intent is not to cause PTSD, but our intent is to draw attention to it, because what is happening, we believe is unfair to segregate a whole demographic of society, and they have no voice to speak to what's happened to them.
So, a question. Why Oshawa? Just your group, in terms of why Oshawa. There isn't the same type of access to services, whether that be birth control or abortion or otherwise, for women here. We actually have very limited services available when it comes to that. I'm trying to understand why Oshawa, then. We already have barriers for women here. Why not focus on areas that have the services, if that's the goal, to try and change things?
It's not simply Oshawa that's been protested. Many cities around Ontario have been. We also believe that the people of Oshawa also need to, do deserve to see the truth of abortion, and that's why we do it here.
And when you say truth, there's truth behind rape, there's truth behind child pornography, there's truth behind these images, but some things are just not shown as broadly and as publicly because of children that are already here. So it was asked before, but I'm just really trying to understand why the need for such graphic images when words can get across what you need to get across, especially if you know that it harms women who have had stillbirths and women who have had miscarriages, and you know that people are coming forward and saying that children are being affected by these very graphic images. Why still push?
A few things. First of all, rape and child pornography are not legal, however abortion is, and that's why we do what we do. Also, we've witnessed with our own eyes people realizing what abortion is, and they take a second thought to consider it, and they've changed their minds. And the reason why we do this is to change hearts and minds, and that's why we do it. We don't take delight in showing butchered preborn children, but we want to change minds so that it happens less.
And for organizations that may want to counter protest, or your organization has no problem with that?
Counter protesting falls under free speech, so they have a right.
So if residents of this community don't get an answer from council, but want to stand in front of your sign with trigger warnings, or stand and block what your sign is showing far enough away without any altercation, your group would be fully accepting of that counter protest?
We support free speech, so of course, yes.
Thank you.
Any other member of council? Seeing none, thank you for your delegation.
Thank you so much.
Our next delegation is Eric Alcock.
Good evening, sir. Please make sure the green button is lit, and you have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Dear mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for this opportunity to address this issue, and I do appreciate the time you have afforded. I'm aware that Ms. Thornton of the anti-parvody group Direct Intervention Reaching Everyone Oshawa is requesting that council implement a bylaw to restrict anti-abortion speech and signage on public sidewalks in Oshawa. Such a law, if enacted, would blatantly violate the charter rights of Canadian citizens to freedom of expression. I have read DIR's letter to council, and I stand amazed at the misrepresentation of provincial Bill 163, which was expressed in that letter. DIR's letter misreads altogether the structure and intent of Bill 163, a bill that nonetheless also contravenes charter rights and deserves repeal by the new conservative government under Doug Ford. We do know that elections have consequences, and let's hope that that election has consequences for Bill 163. As to DIR's not-so-subtle attempt to accuse the pro-life organizers of extreme hostility, I can testify that, through personal experience, that any such hostility which surfaces at these sidewalk protests originates nearly exclusively from those who advocate for abortion. In 2017, I filed at least four complaints with Durham Regional Police for violence against my person and my signs while I was protesting abortion using graphic images. Fortunately, two of those four perpetrators were located and disciplined by police. But on every occasion of my protests, numbering in the hundreds, without exception, I am subjected to a barrage of loud and filthy, vulgar language, insults, and interference. I regularly protest against abortion on the streets of Oshawa, perhaps more so than any other pro-life individual. And I am well acquainted with the tactics used by pro-abortion individuals, such as Christine Thornton, to block our message from reaching the eyes and ears of local citizens. I will give Ms. Thornton due credit for her heartfelt desire and advocacy in helping vulnerable groups of low-income and homeless people in our region. It is so very ironic, though, that in a recent newspaper article, she described her fight for tenant rights as being fundamentally about human rights. And then she boldly asked the question, "At the end of the day, what is the value of human life?" Allow me to answer that question, Ms. Thornton, from the point of view of a fellow human being. Every human life, regardless of location, age, size, or disability, deserves to be fully respected and protected, more so when that human life is completely vulnerable and defenseless, as in the case of an unborn baby. I'd like to share the contents of a letter which I wrote last year to the Oshawa Municipal Law Enforcement Office in response to what I considered to be antagonism by certain authorities directed towards my sign-carrying activities. I believe it will help the Oshawa councillors to understand better the dynamics of pro-life protest, so that the charter rights of all Canadians can be duly preserved. Names which appeared in my letter have been changed for reasons of privacy. Dear Mr. X, on Saturday passed, at the intersection of Harmony Road and Totten Road, I was standing on the northwest corner, as I often do on Saturdays, displaying anti-abortion signs. Normally, there are a number of passersby who object to my signage. One sign in particular bears the graphic image of an aborted child. Each time I hold an anti-abortion protest, I ensure that the event is filmed by video camera, because in the past I've had to provide video footage to police in the case of assaults and damages to my signs. Last Saturday, a municipal law enforcement officer, Mr. Z, approached me and informed me that due to a complaint about the offensive nature of my sign, he was required to investigate. I do have the video and audio portions of our conversation, should it ever become necessary to disclose the substance of our conversations on that day. Several months ago, I had a visit from two other municipal law enforcement officials, both women who were also investigating complaints made on that particular Saturday. They asked me to remove my signs because they were violating bylaws. Initially, they told me my signs were obstructing the view of traffic, but clearly I responded that was impossible. It was plainly evident from the layout of the intersection that my signs in relation to traffic could not have obstructed any driver's view of the road.
Excuse me, sir, you must wrap up.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll move along now. I went on to say that there is, in fact, right now, a similar court case in the works in the city of Peterborough, and the court has weighed in on the side of charter rights of free expression. Furthermore, the Kingston Police Department efficiently dealt with a series of complaints about graphic abortion pictures in 2015, with a Facebook posting to the public that said the following. This is from the Kingston Police Department. "We are receiving numerous calls regarding pro-life or anti-abortion protests happening around the city. We are aware of the activity and the graphic nature of the images on display. To this end, we have sought a legal opinion from the Kingston Crown Attorney, which advises that this conduct is not an offense under law and is protected by the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, specifically freedom of expression. We are aware that some may find these protests offensive, but we would kindly ask that you refrain from calling police to report."
Okay, sir, your time's up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Members of council, questions to the delegation? Seeing none, thank you for your delegation.
Thank you very much.
Our next delegation is Tamara Leclerc. Good evening. Please make sure that the light beside you is lit.
It is.
And you have five minutes.
I have five minutes. I won't take up that much of your time. I'm speaking here this evening on the topic we've all been enjoying for the last little bit, not a pleasant one, but a topic we need to discuss. Apparently, we need this in our faces. Again, the abortion issue was laid to rest some time ago. Just to clear things up for us to where I'm coming from, I'm a mother of four children, two daughters, and I've had one miscarriage. And I was also raised a Catholic and made the difficult decision to commit to the consequences of my actions and raise my children, and that was a luxury. I had that choice. Some women don't have that choice, and I won't sit here and judge them for their choices. I will, however, uphold their right to make them. Emma, my daughter, was supposed to appear here with me this evening. Last week, it was announced, our new premier announced his intentions to curtail women's rights in Ontario, hard-won, hard-fought-for rights, and that these folks here this evening are enacting their right to free speech. I would challenge them that what they are doing is creating an unsafe environment in our community for women to freely make the choices. They are legally entitled to make, and basically what they're doing is advocating hate speech, as far as I'm concerned. I feel hated by these folks, and I share their values. So, that being said, I think it's important for council here this evening to take a stand, take a leadership position. We heard from some marketing folk here tonight who said that we have to be clear in our communications. We have to take a leadership position. We have to rebrand Oshawa. Let's rebrand Oshawa a safe place for women. I find it ironic that Counselor England opened up this evening with the statistic which kind of -- which kind of went over like cockroaches that every six days, a woman in Canada loses her life to her domestic partner. Let's make sure these babies have moms who have a safe place to live before we go bringing them into the world. Let's, let's make that our first priority and then talk about medical procedures and who's allowed to have them without guilt or remorse. So I think that's about all I have to say. Anyone else?
So, one second, please. Members of council, questions to Ms. Leclerc? Seeing none. Ms. Leclerc, your, Emma Leclerc is your daughter?
Yes, she is. And unfortunately, she won't be able, she, she is, I actually didn't get to finish that. When she heard last week about, you know, I was raised in an era where I was kind of in-between. I wasn't quite the feminist, and my mom had to work, and so I'm on the cusp of in-between. She is a true feminist. She knows her rights and she is, she wants them enforced. And she cried, she broke down in tears when she saw the backward step we took last week in, in the announcement of where we're heading. So I'm here to speak for her because right now she's, she's traumatized, literally, and can't speak for herself. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, members of council, questions? Councillor McQuaid England.
So, just to be clear, you would like council to at least have the discussion, and if not, don't make a decision tonight, but at least move it forward so that we can have a discussion about this, about where and what we can do legally and how we can accomplish those goals while respecting the rights of women and respecting the rights of the charter.
I think if we looked hard enough into it, I think council would find that they already probably have a bylaw since they conveniently did delete the pictures from circulation. I mean, if they're not good enough for your eyes, why should people in the street have to look at them? If you have a bylaw or a procedure that allows you to restrict them from circulation online, there certainly is something in your little rulebook that you can enact to make this community safer for women and for children. So I want you to, if you don't know that, find that, and if it's not there, make it happen.
Thank you.
Any other member of council? Seeing none, thank you for your delegation.
Thank you, Your worship.
Our next delegation is Mr. Larry Ladd. Mr. Ladd, if you can make sure the green button is lit in the center of the table. And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Henry, and all members of council. In my opinion, this report, CNCL-18-50, in some areas does not meet the Oshawa Strategic Plan objective of accountable leadership by ensuring respect, responsiveness, and transparency. On page three, item CNCL-18-50, it stated a quote was provided which very, which was very reasonable, given that it took into account recovery for the metal items which reduced the cost for the work. If correct, I am assuming a side transaction for the boat launch hoist, et cetera, occurred, which I inquired about in my correspondence of May 31st and was never answered. I am still awaiting the monetary figure, and where did the money go to or for what? What was the tender quote given by Roney Excavating and by how much was it reduced through the recovery of the metal items? It should be noted on attachment number two, CNCL-18-50, material was removed from the harbor lands from A to T. Everything in the marina property was labeled "remove and dispose." Yes, Roney Excavating was given permission so that nothing was declared surplus and sent to auction. All tools, equipment, et cetera, associated with managing and operating a marina and boat launch was listed "remove and dispose." That's why I wanted and asked for an inventory list, which I did not receive. Why? In my May 31st correspondence, I mentioned the water lots as they are associated with the marina entrance. I have brought my maps with me this evening as I have concerns with the property ownership and survey lines mainly associated around the boat launch area that may not hold up with the port authority. As well, I would appreciate an update on the access to the Oshawa pier issue. Is the federal Oshawa Port Authority willing to assume part of the liability insurance cost? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to council. Hopefully, councillors will have gleaned the information from staff regarding the questions I have asked tonight as well as those questions in my May 31st address to Community Services Committee. I want to take a look at all you guys tonight and ladies. On May the 4th, I made a request to the Development Services Committee to speak. The clerks deemed that it was not time-sensitive and referred it to the May 28th Development Services Committee meeting. That's the day I turned 75 years old, and I certainly wasn't happy that I had to come down here on my birthday at that particular meeting just to observe if there was something going on the waterfront. And lo and behold, a couple of days later, I get an email saying there'd been an interaction with staff, and they moved my request to the Community Services Meeting. And now you give me five minutes to speak. So it took me from May the 4th to get here to speak, and I'm very, very unhappy about that. There is a problem down there with survey lines and property lines. Shortly, you're about to receive your boat launch request and your report from staff. Let me tell you, I've been trying to take a look at that marina property. I haven't seen it from a distance for over three years. Everything that has been done down there has been disposed of, and I think that's wrong. When you have equipment, that's the price of a travel hoist that's in the neighborhood of $300,000, new, with very few options, and you had one down there that I think you should have declared surplus. I think it should have been declared surplus and put up for auction. Certainly mechanic found it unfit. You can go in IndyCar lot in the city and find a car that's unfit. If you want to buy it, they'll make it fit, same as if it's in an accident. So I'm a little bit miffed that I read the report from your Commissioner of Community Development Services, and I'm given five minutes, and you're coming down with a boat launch ramp? Take a look at it. The boat launch ramp didn't say that it need a travel hoist? Is it, is it a boat launch ramp that you back a vehicle into and slide your vehicle off? Take a look at it, because I know what the motion was made by the councillor here. I've got maps here of the entire harbor area and the marina, as you're well aware of, that you've seen many times before. You're coming back with a report shortly. Let me tell you, you better know the survey lines, you better know the property lines, because I was asked by Warren Monroe to fill out a piece of paper where a preferred boat launch ramp would be. Let me tell you, a short while ago, I received a phone call from an individual that wanted, as he said, put a marina and a boat launch ramp in, but his real thing was putting a 350-foot boat down there. And my friends in Toronto say that people are interested in putting a big cruise boat down through the lakes this year. Let me tell you, okay? The water lots on that marina, part of it belongs to you, the majority of it doesn't. So if the port authority decides that they want to put a boat out in front of where the old Oshawa Yacht Club should be, right? And I'm told that they said first, "Well, no." Then they found out it was going to go out in front of where your property stays by where the Oshawa Yacht Club is, it was a yes. So they threw the ball into our court. So as you talk about putting your boat launch ramp in, okay, you better be careful. You better be re-careful. So that's all I really got to say. I wish, I really wish that you would have answered my questions at the Community Service Meeting. I got to express my opinions there. The city clerk interrupted and said, "This meeting has to end right now because we have a finance committee meeting starting shortly." I never got an answer. Lo and behold, I read the commissioner's report, and I seen red. So I certainly hope you appreciate why I feel the way I do.
Okay, Mr. Ladd. Questions to Mr. Ladd? Elsir McQuaid England?
Okay, so Mr. Ladd, just so that I'm clear, one thing that I did hear from you is you would like us to sort of review how things get on the agenda because you found that the timing was a bit long for what you were requesting.
That's correct.
Okay, to be clear. And then you also are looking for, the inventory list was given, but your, your main request is what happened to the boat launch hoist? And?
Let me, let me correct you, councillor. I was never given an inventory list of what was there when the city acquired the property. What I read, right, in the report was the material that was disposed of. I've never received an inventory report as to what was there when you acquired it. Only what the, only what was gotten rid of and disposed of or either scrapped. You have a policy, when your vehicles reach their time and lifeline, they're generally, they're generally declared surplus and sent to auction. I'm talking city trucks, lawn mowers, tractors, et cetera. Why was this thing dealt differently?
I will make sure to ask those questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ladd.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to waive the rules to bring forward the report, CNCL-18-50.
Uh, CNCL-18, sorry, just give me one second.
Or move to alter the agenda, I guess.
50? I'm sorry.
CNCL-18-50, it's the...
Okay, sorry.
It relates to the delegation that just came forward?
It's located on page 14. So, in order to waive the rules to be, bring the item forward, you'll need a secondary? Second by councillor Shields. So in altering the rules takes two-thirds, so I, I need to see all members of council's hands. So in altering the rules to bring the item forward, all those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? None, that carries. So councillor McQuaid England, you're on page 14 of the, of the agenda with the number at the bottom of the page.
I am. Mr. Mayor, is it all right if I sit down, as it's hard to ask questions from an electronic?
Yeah.